Lord, I just want to thank you for the privilege is to be here tonight, Lord. And your word says, Lord, that we are to pray for those in authority over us. So, Lord, I would like to pray for the mayor and every council member. I pray your blessing and your favor be upon them and their families. And, Lord, we pray for these proceedings tonight. And I pray, Lord, that your presence would be evident in every decision that's made in this place tonight, Lord. Lord, we vow to give you the honor, the glory, and the praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
We don't have a special presentation for Sergeant First Class Ewan, U.S. Army Recruiting Station, who alerted the sheriff department while following a vehicle that was involved in the robbery of an A.M. P.M. store. Sergeant?
The proclamation reads, whereas President Theodore Roosevelt on one said, "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The worst thing you can do is nothing." And whereas on the evening of February the 20th, 2009, Sergeant First Class Frederick L. Ewan, Jr., entered an A.M. P.M. mini-market at the corner of Bear Valley Road and Amethyst as a man rushed past him in a hurry and a clerk announced they had just been robbed. And whereas Sergeant First Class Ewan, Jr., followed the man behind a Blockbuster Video store and witnessed a suspect get into a Honda and try to hide while the driver took off. And whereas the driver drove to a home on North Star Avenue unknowingly, followed from a distance by a vehicle driven by Sergeant First Class Ewan. And whereas the location of the robbers was relayed to the police department dispatch via cellphone by Sergeant Ewan, leading to the location and identification of the suspects. Now, therefore, I, Rudy Covellis, Mayor of the city of Victorville, do hereby join the other members of the city council in recognizing Sergeant First Class Frederick L. Ewan, Jr. for his quick action and courage resulting in arrest and confessions of the suspects. Sergeant, thank you very much for your actions. And I'm sure that Captain Taylor has a few words to thank you also and for your actions. Thank you.
Sergeant, on behalf of the police department, we just want to thank you for becoming an involved citizen, doing the right thing, not getting involved, but reporting that information to us. And thank you very much.
I'd just like to thank the city council for awarding me this. You know, I look at it as, you know, something that I think everybody should take a part in, you know, when criminals go out there and do the unnecessary actions that they do. I think it's in everybody's best interest to actually stay away from it and do what you can to report it to keep our streets a little bit safer than they are right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Persons wish to address the board on any agenda which are requested to complete or requests to complete one of the white cards in the foyer. Bring it to our city clerk. And when I call you, you can step up to the podium. You have three minutes to make your comments. And then either we'll agendaize your item or someone from the city staff will contact and request your concerns. So with that, I have item for item number one, we have Karen Moore.
Evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Karen Moore, and I have lived in the Victor Valley for 30 years. And I've owned businesses in Victorville for almost that length of time. And I'm here tonight to ask for your help. My company, Simran Escrow, has been operating since 1987. And we have noticed in the last couple of years that we have lost, well, actually, just in the last year, we've lost 17 escrow companies and/or branches in our valley due to the fact that our real estate market is primarily foreclosures. And the lenders who own these properties are requiring that escrow services be handled out of the area. Our real estate market right now is about 90% foreclosures. And last month alone, there were 544 closed escrows, foreclosure escrows. And, gosh, probably only a few of those were handled by local businesses. The other issue with this is the buyers of these properties are required to do business out of the area. They have to pay higher fees. They have to travel sometimes 150 miles when there are local businesses perfectly capable of handling this type of business. And we have clients and buyers who want to use local services and keep the business in the community. And, you know, when businesses close up here, it's not just about that industry. Very often, those people leave the valley. When those businesses close, it's revenue. When people are laid off, then they don't go to the restaurants or the theaters. They don't shop, and that impacts the whole valley. We have been to the town of Apple Valley, and they have given us a resolution in support of keeping business local. Same with the city of Hesperia. And recently, we learned that the California Assembly has introduced a bill, it's AB 957, to change this. So, and I brought a copy for you. But to change this so that buyers have a choice of settlement services, title services, and other services involved with the whole escrow process. We've also been getting petitions signed by other businesses, not only real estate businesses, but other businesses and local citizens to keep the business local. You know, there's a lot of reasons why businesses fail, but there's plenty of business in this valley, and we're just not allowed to participate in it. A lot of these lenders are out of state, and they pick a national company, and then they subcontract it out. And our real estate, local real estate agents and people have no choice as to where this business goes. So we were hoping to maybe get your support with the resolution. And I've had some phone calls from two assemblymen so far in California, because I sent them all a package with all of this information, and they're very interested in this. And the support from the cities really means something to them, too, so.
Can you give that information to your city clerk?
Absolutely.
And also, I'll have Economic Development, our director, Keith Metzler. We have talked about this issue, so they maybe can give you some insight on what we're doing on our side.
Great. Would love that. Thank you very much.
Laura Falcon.
I'm acting as translator for her.
Falcon, then.
Falcon, Laura Falcon. My problem is, este, que en los dos meses, diciembre y enero, me llegaron cerca de mil dólares de agua. Y yo vivo sola. Quiero saber, este, no, no han podido resolver. He llamado varias veces, van y revisan, pero me dicen que el medidor está bien y que, no sé, no sé qué debo hacer.
For the month of December.
Eh, diciembre y enero.
In January, she has received bills over $1,000. She lives alone. She has called, and resolution has not been made on her bill. They said that the meter is working properly, but still, like she said, she lives alone, and it's too high for her. Normally, she pays $30 to $50 a month.
Any other information?
Tiene más información?
No, solo traigo los recibos.
Okay, she has her invoices with her, her bills.
Okay. I can tell her in Spanish.
Okay. I'm not.
I can translate.
Nuestra secretaria lleva los papeles, ya la llamé. La va a llamar mañana o pasado mañana, por favor.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Rudy, for the benefit of the public, you should also probably translate your response.
What I told Mrs. Falcon was that she should turn in the information to her city clerk, who's actually in charge of the billing, and that she will give back to her either tomorrow or the following day. And assist her. Assist her. Thank you. We'll not go into our regular sessions, and we have first, we have the Library Board of Trustees. And do we have any revisions to the agenda?
There are no revisions.
We do have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's not working, so we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
We do have a consent calendar?
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next is Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Mr. Caldwell.
Item three is the consent calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Item three is a request to ratify documents relating to Dr. Pepper, Seven Up, and the ground lease and the memorandum of the ground lease agreement, the purchase option, the agreement regarding enforcement of owner participation agreement, and supplementary declaration of what is referred to generally as CCNRs, and an indemnity agreement. All of those are a package of documents relative to that project. Questions or comments from members of the airport authority? None, their motion would be in order?
For approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously. Number five's request to approve a reconsideration of an earlier action with regard to the air cargo marketing consulting contract with Guy Fawkes for it to become a month-to-month agreement, not to exceed six months, fee of $10,000, not to exceed $60,000, for the life of the agreement. You have backup materials that deal with that. Questions or comments? I would have a question from our city manager. I believe that in the new agreement, it's a month-to-month agreement.
It's a month-to-month, month-to-month. You have additional information. I'm not sure it's in the agenda that I requested from the airport manager that was Mr. Peter Sotekist, indicating that the involvement at the, it is here, at present time, on forming an alliance with Subic Bay Metropolitan Authority and Clark International Airport Corporation. Don't want to interrupt these proceedings. I've directed that continue with those meetings. And it is my opinion that that is a month-to-month. I would hope that there would be a success on this. If it should be successful, we receive a favorable response in regard to our attempts, that should continue. And if not, I would bring this back to the council and ask that it not be continued. Let me, let me point out something to the council. This is, there is no secret, the economy, you read every day on what's been cut back in the county and other cities, they're cut back their expenditures, we're cutting back expenditures. We have a lot of activity that are on a contract. Of course, one of the things that I have mentioned privately, and might as well mention publicly, that we have a myriad of contracts. And I would always request that contracts be canceled and then renegotiated before we start laying off employees. I cannot, in good faith, continue with contracts and lay off employees when we have employees that are in a position to continue those jobs. We're trying to save as much money as we possibly can. And at the same time, we do have contracts with individuals that have unique talents, and we don't want to lose that talent if, in fact, those contracts are producing. I think that I and the council and the public expect nothing less. And so these negotiations are occurring, and they should continue. I hope they will be positive for everyone. I recommend that it continue on a month-to-month basis.
Further questions or comments? Not a motion would be in order?
Move for approval?
Second.
Or can I? Screen hasn't changed. There we, there we. Anamis, item six, request to renew the airport marketing contract with Jim Worsham for six months in the amount of $150,000. Questions or comments from the council? Have the packet of materials that, with the accomplishments of Mr. Worsham?
I move for approval.
I have a question. Is this the same month-to-month on this?
No, this one is not a month-to-month. Mr. Worsham's contract was considerably more, and this was submitted, the contract had expired. It was submitted to me. We began to look at the amount of travel and other items that were associated with it. My initial, my initial request was to cancel the contract on the basis that I think all contracts should be canceled, renegotiated on a, on a as-needed basis individually. In this particular instance, has been reported again by Mr. Peter Sotekist and to some extent, Mr. Worsham, there was a request to reduce the contract that had been paid in the past, also that he be responsible for his, that he not be reimbursed, the fee to, for private use of airplanes. But at the same time, he's very much involved in two or three contracts that are essential to the continued development of the airport. And felt that upon further consideration, that because of the activities that he is involved in and the negotiations that he was involved in, if we could reduce the contract fee, then I would recommend that it be extended for six months. This is actually through January till June. In the new budget session, we would take this matter up again and discuss the need and the accomplishments, and then make a determination on availability of funds beginning July 1.
Total of $150,000.
This one is a total of $150,000, $25,000 a month for six months.
I would make a motion and approve, or might did, I guess.
Your second?
Second. Moved and seconded. May we vote? Anamis, that concludes the regular part of the agenda. There are three items under closed session, which are enumerated on the agenda. There's no urgency add-on items that would conclude the airport authority agenda. We'll not go into the Victorville Redevelopment Agency agenda. Any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
We have the consent calendar?
Move for approval.
For a second? Motion passes. We now have item number four, which is request to ratify the following documents relative to the Dr. Pepper Seven Up Corporation O.P.A. Number one is the assignment and assumption from Dr. Pepper Seven Up Incorporated to the American Bottling Company. Number two is First Amendment to the Owner Participation Agreement. And three is the agreement regarding enforcement of owner participation agreement.
Move for approval?
Motion passes. Item number five. Keith, could you give us just a brief overview of this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The item before you involves an affordable housing agreement that was previously entered into by and between the redevelopment agency and the successors to the Southern California Housing Development Corporation, which is National Community Renaissance. Currently, we're in the final stages of completing the construction loan and permanent financing for the build-out of this project. Very generally, this project is a 128-unit multifamily development proposed generally along the northern extension of Civic Drive, immediately north of and adjacent to the existing 100-unit apartment community known as Impressions at Valley Center. This board previously approved an agreement that actually positioned the agency to serve as a financing conduit to help build this project. The funding source for the project is from the redevelopment agency's Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund. Very basically, the two items that are subject to this agenda item involve an estoppel agreement, which is a requirement being requested of us, mainly from Bank of America, who is the senior lender in the project. And basically, that document restates certain facts to their benefit related to our affordable housing agreement. It's our position that there's nothing substantial in this document that deviates from what we've already agreed to in the affordable housing agreement. The second document basically memorializes a disbursement structure, and it's the disbursement agreement. And being a participant to the overall capital structure of this project, we are going to be lending money through, to the project to assist in the construction financing, but then also have it be rolled over as a part of the permanent financing structure. So we've utilized Bank of America's services, since they're the senior lender on the project, to help facilitate the disbursement. That's processing all of the payment requests, that's processing all of the inspections, and basically bringing some assurance to us prior to actually cutting checks that we're paying for work actually complete. I think most notable in the disbursement agreement, which is different from the original structure approved by this board, and we think the change is certainly in our benefit, is the cash flow management will be controlled a lot better to where we're actually going to be retaining our funds from the housing fund as long as we can. It was originally contemplated that the loan, which is about $21 million, was going to be immediately deposited into an account with Bank of America, to which they would use then to disperse and fund the construction element of the project. We instead are going to retain those funds and disperse on, on an as, or as an occurrence basis, if you will. So with that, staff is recommending the approval of the two agreements. They do not substantially change the nature of the agreement already approved, and the change that we do include in here, actually, we believe works in our favor. I think the only thing further to add is that we're probably on schedule to close the loans next week, and I think there's a groundbreaking, groundbreaking expected within the next 30 days. There's representatives here from National Community Renaissance that can speak to any questions or comments you might have. They have indicated to me that they would like to do a groundbreaking. It's a pretty big project that we've been working on for a long time, and they definitely would like you to be a part of that, that event. So with that, I'll remain available for any questions or comments you might have.
Any questions? We do have John Seymour that wants to speak to the item.
Nothing more to add that Mr. Metzler said, except that we've been working on this project for well over two years. It's phase two. We look forward to the groundbreaking. The disbursement agreement is, we've reviewed it, our attorney has reviewed it as well. Had three attorneys review it. It's in your best interest to move forward with that. And with that, we would like to, if you approve the item tonight, schedule the groundbreaking, be a significant amount of jobs created, and also fees and permits being paid to the city in excess of $2.6 million upon approval. Thank you.
You. Comments?
Good project.
Absolutely. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
You're too late. You didn't have anything to do with it.
Okay, approved. We have item number six and seven, which are closed session. And we'll move into our Victor Valley, or Victor Valley, Victorville Water District, going back a few years. Victorville Water District Agenda. Revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
Consent calendar?
I'm sorry, for the Water District Agenda, there, I think it's covered under another item, but there is a need for an executive session for the Water District item, but it may be covered under the general section, but if not, I'd like to add that matter.
The only way the council could add it is on a finding of immediate need to take action on the item?
It's, yes, it's, it's an item that arose earlier and has been discussed as part of another litigation. But I, and I thought it was on the item here for a discussion, and I noticed it's not because it involves the Water District. It needs to be added.
Yep, the council would have to make a finding pursuant to government code 54954.2B2. The item arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's immediate need to take action on the item.
If it involves litigation, I'll make the finding.
Second.
Ending a threat litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9B2. Jim, do you have facts as to that the item arose after the posting of this agenda? Council make that finding, and then there's immediate need?
It, it did arise after a staff meeting, a consultation, that we realized that we had an item that only the council can resolve, and because of the threat of litigation that exists that's going to roll into the Water District, we believe we also need approval, I need a discussion, I don't need approval, I do need a discussion and possible approval by the council as it affects the Water District.
I'll move the findings.
You need the specific subject matter?
It would be helpful to have some idea of what the subject matter is.
Audit.
Okay, then. On a potential litigation, the findings, Mr. Cox has enumerated the reasons, and you'd need a motion to add it.
So move. That will be added to your closed session.
It would be pending threat litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9B2.
There's a motion in a second?
A second.
Yeah, there is. We need to.
This is not on the agenda, so we'll have to take this by a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will we go into the consent calendar?
For approval?
A second.
Item number four, request to award a contract to D.D.H. Apple Valley Construction in the amount of $357,555 for the construction of of, uh, $357,555 for the construction of Sierra Road and Pacoima Road, 24-inch charts that have great water pipeline. Fair motion?
Second.
These are local companies, uh, Apple Valley Water Construction. Number five, uh, request for the same company for, uh, a construction of, um, of, uh, water projects at various locations, 24-inch SCA West Side Waterline, uh, and 24-inch Hemisus Road Waterline, Innovation Phase Four Domestic Waterline, and Innovation Phase Two Domestic Waterline, in the amount of $2,759,138,080. There a move? Motion to approve?
Approve.
I asked, um, Mr. Lamson for a map for these two items, just so we can get an idea where they were, um... Ah, there they are. This is for item number five. Yes?
They're going all the way to Mojave? Oh, okay.
Local company gets all the work. It's good.
We need to screen back.
Just right here. Okay.
And it should be noted that we do have, uh, closed items for the Water District. City of Victorville Council Agenda. Revisions?
There are two revisions. Um, on item number six, the city engineer has requested that that item be continued to the April 21st meeting, and there is a request of the risk manager to remove closed session item number 17.
Mayor Cabralis, I also do not need to have the closed session item on number 13 as well, so I would request, as a last minute, we found out that we have nothing to report on that.
13?
Item 13.
Item number three is a public hearing. A public hearing to hear arguments for or against adding chapter 10.01 to the Victorville Municipal Code, enacting and enabling ordinance for the setting of sewer rates. Do you have to read the, the heading of the ordinance?
Yes, the public hearing first needs to be opened on this item.
Okay, the public hearing is now open, uh, for item number three. Is there anyone that wishes to address the city council, either for or against item number three? Very none. We'll close the, uh, public hearing, and please read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville, adding chapter 10.01 to the Victorville Municipal Code, enacting and enabling ordinance for the setting of sewer rates.
The introduction of ordinance 2234.
Second?
Second.
Number four has been continued to, um, 4705. We now have the consent calendar, item number five.
Uh, Mayor Cabralis, it's, um, item number six that is going to be continued.
Second, uh, your, your, um, consent calendar?
Consent calendar.
I have made a...
I believe we have item number four, which is the purchasing ordinance, which is a public hearing as well before the consent calendar, and I understand, Mr. Cox, that we, we're not pulling that item at this time, correct?
Oh. So you're not pulling item number four out?
Cox, is it the, is it your request to pull item number four at this time, or...
Well, excuse me, Mr. Man, council, item number four has gone, has gone back and, and forth, and there was some disagreement in regard to the reason that this was required. Um, one of the things that I noted was the, uh, allowance for the expenditures. I felt that, uh, that the, uh, amount of expenditures allowed, uh, in regard to purchasing for the city manager was much too high. I had recommended that language be changed, uh, to restrict the, uh, the spending authority of the manager to, uh, a basic $25,000 fee, and that any expenditures in addition to that, uh, should go to the city council, and that the department head should be restricted to $10,000. If it needs to go to 25, they can get the manager's permission and beyond that, back to the city council. Uh, there is, uh, an exception for the change orders. Uh, in looking at the change orders, I know that, uh, and I discussed with the attorney today and asked if, if the language should stay as it is, uh, for the time being, in that, uh, change orders are generally found in the state's, uh, contract code, uh, on projects where the engineer is allowed to do the percentages. This allows the city manager to have, uh, a much higher fee on a change order, and I can't find the section, but it was $100,000 or 10% of the contract fee, whichever was less, as I recall the language. But I, yeah, I ask that all these changes be made. I, I realize that, that the largest the city is and the amount of expenditures we have, uh, that it may be necessary to have expenditures more, but I, I feel at this time that it was in the best interest of the city and the city council to restrict that amount of authority that department heads or the council or the managers should have. If this turns out to be a problem in the future, or if there's any reasons that it should be extended beyond that because of, uh, construction, uh, emergency construction and other matters, or public works contracts, uh, that would be, can, uh, cause a problem if they were delayed, I think we can address them at that time. And specifically, under the general public works, uh, if there are actions that happen that constitute an emergency, the manager is always authorized to declare that emergency, have the existing expenditures under the current law notify the council within 24 hours, and the council ratifies that expenditure. This is under a separate section with that kind of backup. It felt, I felt that these expenditures, uh, uh, I, I think that the council should get familiar with these at the time, and, uh, rather than to go into the details of what could have happened or what would happen, I think it's best to restrict the amount of money at this time. Other issue was, um...
Change orders.
Change orders. No, the change order, we, we have that. It was, uh, I have the change orders, uh, where it's, uh, not to exceed 20% of the contract price. I, I think I discussed that one. I said 10%, it's 20%. Is that correct?
And there was an issue, I think, related to local vendor preferences.
The local vendor preference, uh, there have been several incidents. I have not had the chance to, to research that. I am told that this was a high priority of the council, local vendor preference. Cities have adopted those, uh, those, uh, changes. At current, this does not change what currently, uh, is in the code. Uh, there was a request that we withdraw this whole thing until that could be, uh, studied. However, it's, um, I believe it was 3%. There may be a need to revise that based upon other considerations, and I think that should come back as a, uh, a further consideration because we're moving ahead on projects, and because we, this was approved months ago in regard to change to the charter city, uh, and because of the demands that are made by some of the department heads and contracts we're moving in, uh, I, I think that we should, I recommend that we go ahead with those dollar changes made by the attorney at the request of the council, uh, go ahead and approve it. I don't think there's any other minor changes. The vendor amount is going to have to be studied anyway, and I can't find anyone who has a fee that's acceptable, that can be adopted by the council under the charter ordinance without being the threat of, uh, gift of public funds, and that needs to be studied anyway. Um, the local vendor preference is in effect. I believe it's 3%. Is that correct? And I think that is an absolute good start. It still expresses the council's opinion to assist, and, uh, the public philosophy of local vendor preference to spend the money here. Uh, I would request that we go ahead and, uh, and have the first reading introduction. Uh, if there is a need to delay, if we run into something that's unanticipated, nothing is lost because it can be done and halted at the next meeting, but I believe it will go smoothly, and then after we've had time to discuss this other item, we'll come back for possible amendments. We would like council input on that also.
You recommend that we go ahead with...
I believe that we can, we can, we can go ahead because the local vendor is not going to change. Uh, there's no changes, and the only change that I'm recommending is a subst- substantial reduction in the manager's authority to expend public funds, and believe that when it gets beyond the $25,000 figure, it has to be approved. It should be approved by the city council at a meeting in the public.
Mayor Cabralis, this is an, an agendized public hearing, so your choices are essentially to, uh, continue the item. You could open the public hearing, uh, hear all the testimony, close the public hearing, uh, introduce the ordinance with the revisions proposed by the city manager. Uh, you could continue the whole item or remove it from the agenda. Um, or you could, uh, again, there will be a second, a consideration of this before the ordinance is, is complete, so we would have the ability, assuming you want to proceed with it, open the public hearing, uh, take all the testimony, close the public hearing, uh, have a motion to adopt the ordinance with the changes suggested by the city manager, and then the, the actual document itself will be revised to reflect those changes before you consider it for, uh, actual, uh, adoption.
Okay. Well, I'll, we'll go ahead and call the, uh, the public hearing, um, to, to hear the argument for or against amending the purchasing system as set forth in chapter 2.28 of the Victorville Municipal Code. Uh, the public hearing is open. Uh, anyone wishing to address item number four, either for or against? Very none, then I would close the public hearing and would ask for, uh, introduction of ordinance number 2235.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville, amending the purchasing system set forth in chapter 2.28 of the Victorville Municipal Code for the purpose of adopting new provisions governing public works, project, contract, and other procurements in exercise of its charter powers.
Move way further reading and introduction of the proposed ordinance?
Second.
With the city manager's proposed changes?
Changes.
Yep.
Mayor Cabralis?
Yeah.
Before we vote on that, so if we're waiving for the reading, will it come, will it come back, or no?
Well, no, we have to come back for the second...
Still will come back?
The only, the only, the waiver of further reading just a- avoids the requirement in law to read the entire ordinance.
Okay, forgive me, I am new up here, so I just want to make sure of that.
Well, you get to introduce it by just reading the title only without the entire contents of the document, and then the motion would modify the actual text of the, of the ordinance.
Councilman McEckern, absent that, you would make the city clerk really angry with you.
And you'd be here a lot longer.
Well, and then, uh, secondly, if, if I might, uh, suggest to our city manager and city staff, if we're going to be amending any of our municipal code, I think it would be proper to provide us with what it is now, what it's going to be, what are those changes in that document? Because you're asking me to read a new one versus our current one and try to figure out what those changes are, and as much as I love reading all of this paper that I get on a daily basis, I, I think it would be nice to at least have, if you're, I know the computer systems and, and the way you can track changes and things like that, that ought to be easily done, and I would just ask that at least, uh, before it come back to us, that we have that so we know what those actual changes are, because even with, uh, our city manager's changes tonight, it's changed again. So I just think it's important that we all know what changes we're making, as well as the public know what changes we're making. So if we could see that before the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. That, we will get that, uh, to you far in advance of the next meeting.
Okay, the motion passes. Now we'll go into the consent calendar. Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Councilmember Almond, I need a vote. Thank you.
Motion.
Motion passes. Uh, item number six, that's the one that's been, um, moved over to, um, April 21st?
That's correct.
Okay. And number seven is request to approve amendment number two to the contract with, uh, Cumin and Sun Engineering Contractors of Paradise, California, for the service to abate and demolish additional property at, uh, 12841 Mariposa Road in the amount of $14,456.
For approval?
Second.
Motion passes. Uh, number eight is a request to declare intent to issue tax exempt obligations and adopt resolution number 09-010, entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Victorville declaring its intent to issue tax exempt obligation for certain public improvements and to allow for the reimbursement of expenditures made prior to the issuance of such obligations."
Second.
Motion passes. Uh, item number nine, uh, request to destroy certain records and adopt resolution number 09012, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, giving approval and authorization to destroy certain records of the city water department, finance department, and city clerk department."
For approval?
Second.
Number 10 was, uh, move?
Now, we'd like you to take action on this item, uh, Mayor Cabralis. This is not a typical public hearing, but it's a resolution of necessity, and, uh, this is a resolution necessity that's actually serving as a master resolution of necessity. The actual property owners previously have been afforded the opportunity to address the council in a public, uh, hearing forum. Uh, nevertheless, I would like you to open up a hearing for any perfected property owners, uh, take any testimony so that due process is completely met, uh, and then consideration of the resolution of necessity.
Uh, well, for item number 10, uh, it's a request to adopt resolution number 09-013, and I'll open up a public hearing. Um, anyone wishing to address the city council, either for or against, item number 10. I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 09013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion passes. We have, uh, item number 11, a request to allocate, uh, $900,486 in community development block, uh, grant, and, uh, $340,3559 in home investment partnership program, uh, funds for fiscal year 2009, 2010. Very brief explanation of this.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, every year, as an entitlement city, uh, we receive funds from the U.S. Department... funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and those funds are very commonly recognized as what we call community development block grant funds. The acronym is CDBG, which is most typically recognized by. And also, we're responsible, as an entitlement city, to receive and administer the use of home investment partnership funds. And annually, we're required to go through a application process, and we did that with the help of Councilwoman Almond and Councilman McHeckren. They did assist us in ranking all of the applications that we received this year. Like every year in the past, it was very competitive, but we felt that we were able to clearly distinguish, given the city's priorities in funding this program, we were clearly able to distinguish which applications were most worthy of the awards. I think just as a point of clarification, there was, we did have a committee meeting to discuss all the applications, and the resulting committee meeting did have a clear recommendation. There was a slight change that I discussed very specifically with Councilwoman Almond and Councilman McHeckren with respect to original recommendations involving the capital construction fund. Just for a point of clarification, the changes that we discussed are in this report, so the funding recommendations are accurate and correct. Staff is recommending approval of this item and is available for any questions or comments.
I had a... Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, John.
I just want to say, what a great job Mr. Missler and his staff. I have been on this committee before. This one was a breeze, and I wouldn't mind even volunteering for next year.
There you go, you're on.
I'm very sincere. I think it was wonderful. It really was. Made it very easy. I thought it was great. Thank you.
Well, if I can, I'd like to specifically recognize Liliana Collins, who's here in the audience with her kids, and they should feel very proud. She's the backbone to this program also. We really take the leadership from Tamara Torres, who is our housing, redevelopment housing manager. For all intents and purposes, I get to be the figurehead and report to you. So they're the ones that do the real work. Appreciate your comments in that regard.
I had a question, Keith. There was one for the domestic violence. Was that the better way, or? Okay. I didn't see that there, so I just kind of wondered, so that's good.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Keith.
And not to change anything, maybe just to add, one of the things that we're going to do also for the year forthcoming, there is an expectation that the HUD allocations are going to be greater, so to the extent we do have funds that are in addition to what's already been allocated, we'll reconvene the committee, follow the same process, bring it back to the council for your approval. And then, I think, new this year, we'll also introduce regular updates, progress updates, maybe quarterly updates, is kind of where our mind is right now, so that you, as a council, can kind of see where the funds are being spent and the progress of the expenditure of funds.
And one of the objectives is creating jobs, too, for this. The council reports. Has someone called Will?
The only item, it was on the consent calendar for the city council. It was item Q, informational update on the status of federal stimulus funding. In a meeting with several members of our city staff, I asked that we have this report provided to us and constant updates given. There is perception out there, I'm sure the rest of this council's heard it, that Victorville is not going after any stimulus funding, and this information's available on the website. We are very much going after it, and if we're able to secure any of it, you, everyone, will know about it. So I just want to make sure that everybody takes a chance to look at that, and I've asked Almer, who's in charge of keeping track of that, to continually update us at each council meeting on the progress of applications for stimulus money. Are we getting any of it? What are we going to be able to use it for? So.
Just to add a comment on what Ryan just said, that you can be philosophically against the way the so-called stimulus package was built and put out there on the street, and I did, like many of us, maybe disagree with that. But having said that, would be malfeasant in our office here. If the money's available to your local communities, you're not there to go out and put your hand out and take whatever we're entitled to out of that fund. You can, we have our own levels of responsibility, and so that's just the way that works. So don't anybody misconstrue, just because people stand up and say, "I disagree how the Congress has outlined it," once that's a done deal, then it's our responsibility to find those resources that are there available for the community and use them.
That concludes the meeting, and we'll now go into closed session. Andre?
Mayor Cabralis, there are numerous closed session items. Some pertain to existing litigation. On those, the parties to the litigation and the case numbers are listed on the agendas. Some are real estate property negotiations, the negotiating parties, and parcels are listed, properties are listed on the agenda, and some are pertaining. To the extent there are any final decisions made, we will come out and report any actions taken by the council.
Thank you.
As a result of closed session, we have three reportable actions. The first is with respect to the Victorville Barmatt litigation, case number CIVV-S800863. The council, by unanimous vote, agreed to dismiss the lawsuit. With respect to some of the litigation, there are two reportable actions with respect thereto. The first is that the city manager is authorized to seek an independent audit of the Water District in an amount up to $40,000. The third item is that the city manager has been authorized to cancel any contracts that he deems unnecessary and to renegotiate all potential contracts with respect to projects on behalf of the city.
The meeting is adjourned.
Good.